Did you know this one was coming or was it early?
Well, they announced starting last yesterday.
And you're here?
Of course I'm here.
But this is right after.
They were having some trouble, so that's why I kept my phone on, so I can shut my phone off now. I apologize.
Well, and you got Chris setting up your thing, so we need to wait until he...
Well, I think he's ready. He's ready. And I'm ready. And I forgot when he want me to speak, which is just coming.
It's going to be under my request.
It's under your request.
And then at the other OSBA update will be under my name at the very end then.
Okay, yes.
Talk with before everybody leaves.
Okay, I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the Tuskegee Valley Local Board of Education to order this March 13th. And I certainly want to welcome everyone that is here. We've got a great crowd. So, Mr. Phillips, could you call the roll?
Mrs. Berger?
Present.
Mrs. Green?
Present.
Mrs. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Overton?
Present.
Mr. Gooding?
Present. And if you will, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Mr. Overton. There is the flag.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, once again, we just thank you so much for this opportunity that we can come together and just discuss the things of Tuskegee Valley. And we just want to recognize those that are being honored tonight, God. And we just thank you for just the amazing people that they are, God, and the parents and the supports that's behind them, God. And we thank you so much for them. Lord, we just ask you to give us wisdom and guidance as we go through this evening. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Overton. Mr. Bransky, do we have any additions or corrections to these agenda?
No.
Okay, no additions or corrections. Okay, next on the list, you can see the mission statement and the Board of Education goals that we have. And then we are ready to move to public participation. We, as a board, always encourage public participation. And we do have in the agenda, there is the policy and the rules accordingly. Tonight, we have Mr. Brian Smith to come. And he'll have five minutes to speak. And there won't be any discussion or decisions made on comments that you would make during public participation. We may have, or I will ask the board if they have any questions for clarification. And so if you'd like, go ahead. It's your turn. And if you would state for the record, state your name and address.
My name's Brian Smith. My address is 509 Poplar Street Northwest, all over Ohio. Salutations, everyone. Initially, I would like to personally thank and express my gratitude to every Tuskegee Valley Local School District member who has had or is having a positive influence on our district students' lives, as I certainly feel this pertains to the majority of our Tuskegee Valley staff. I'd like to give a special shout out to Ms. Katie Wells, who has always went above and beyond every time her assistance was requested or needed. Thank you, Katie. Mr. Gooding, I would like to thank you and the Tuskegee Valley Local School District Board of Education for granting myself and my son Wyatt here the privilege to attend tonight's executive session. Personally, Mr. Gooding, I would like to thank you for taking the time to talk to me via phone conversations about issues. And also for permitting my son Wyatt to participate in remote learning while said complaints are being processed. Thank you. Can I thank any other board members for this kind act of charity? Or was this solely...
You can. You've got...
I mean, I don't know. Was it, did that come from you alone, or did you guys collectively...
He's asking your emails. Did you...
Oh.
Were they just from you or from everyone?
They actually came from me, but from everyone, because I brought them up to speed.
Okay, so you made that decision by yourself, but you informed everybody? Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for, I don't know if you were all in agreement or not, but thank you. Okay. All right, Mr. Gooding, you sent me an email dated March 10th, 2023, at 1:03 PM. In said email, you stated, "Executive sessions are considered confidential," and that I have previously explained to you that I record all of my conversations. You advised me that the board does not consent to being recorded in executive session and does not permit any person to record executive session. Respectfully, per Board Policy, Section 0000 under Bylaws titled Executive Session, Code PO0166, does not state this.
Could you repeat that number, please?
Uh, the code or title?
The code.
PO0166. I can do one better for you right here. Wyatt, if you wouldn't mind, pass one of these out to all the five board members. If you guys could raise your hand for Wyatt, that would be acceptable. Then Wyatt, once you're done with that, I would like you also to point out or hand out Section 000 under Bylaws titled Code of Ethics. That code number is PO0123. If you could pass one of these out to everybody as well. In addition, on Tuesday, February 7th of 2023, Tuskegee Valley Local School District Board Appointed Superintendent Dr. Bransky recorded an official, formal appeal hearing for the suspension of a Tuskegee Valley Local School District student that contained just as much confidential student and staff personal information. Present at said hearing was Superintendent Bransky, High School Principal, Mr. Phillips, Assistant Principal, Mr. Duggerhoof, myself, and another Tuskegee Valley Local School District student. Next, I refer you to United States Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit, Case Number 02-3843, Passway versus Ohio Arts Council. Wyatt, please hand out said documentation, and please include Treasurer Mr. Phillips this time, as Mr. Phillips is the records custodian for the district. Therefore, in good faith effort to be responsive and honest to your request, please be advised, I will be recording said executive session. It is my understanding that the Tuskegee Valley Local School District Board answers to the Ohio Department of Education, which consists of 19 members, 11 who are elected, eight who are appointed by the governor. Paul Ray is the president, Martha Manchester is the vice president, and Michelle Newman serves as Newark District 8 representative, as Tuskegee County is designated by the governor to District 8. In the event that I am still unsatisfied through this board hearing, this will be my next course of action in following that civil lawsuit. Thank you, guys, for your time. Any questions? Any clarification?
From the board, is there any clarification? Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. We will continue on now with the superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gooding. Ohio, there are a lot of legal updates and legal and really bills that are sitting down in Columbus at the moment. So, Mrs. Sally Green is going to present a few of those to update the board and our community, potential laws that can be passed that would affect public education. And then Mr. Phillips will also be assisting with some of those financial questions.
Yeah, we're gonna have to move out of the way.
We're just waiting for it to...
Sally, would it help if these lights came off?
All right.
They're closest to the... Whoops. There we go.
Okay, I'm not gonna go over a lot of these things, but I do, and these are all in our updates that I gave you. But I do want to bring this to the community, because there's some important legislation that is out there that is going to affect you critically. And legislators notoriously try to get these things under the belts before people know what's going on. So, I don't normally do this, but I am doing it because it's so important. So, these are our Senate and House representatives. As you can see, we have a Republican and Democrat and both. They're both minority. That means the Senate and the House are controlled by the Republicans. So, the Republicans, at the beginning of each biennial year, they pick what they think is most important, and they number them according to priority. So, Bill Number One is the one that they want to pass no matter what. And we're gonna talk about the different numbers of the bills. These bills might not have got passed two years ago, so they're being reintroduced and renumbered. So, you might see this as, oh, I thought we were already doing this, and it didn't pass. No, it just, they can keep reentering them, okay, until you get tired of it, and they can pass it. So, that's where we're at now. These are people that you need to know their emails and their telephone numbers, because we're gonna be calling them a lot here in the next three months. And I'm gonna move on to... So, Senate Bill One is their number-one priority bill. And it's also in the House. It's called Number 12. So, it's Number 12 on the list in the House. It's Number One in the Senate. And it is to dissolve the State Board of Education's power that they currently have. And it will reduce them to licensing educators or those educations fields. And then the rest of the place will then be created a Department of Education by the legislators, and it will be a bureaucracy from the legislators who will dictate what currently is being housed in the Department of Education. For example, the legislator passes laws. They pass the laws that we have to do dyslexia. That goes to, currently, it goes to the Department of Education, and they write how to make that law effective in education. They ask superintendents, our superintendents, our curriculum directors, our counselors are asked to come and speak to them, so they know exactly what is needed. This will not have that transparency. They will have a hearing like they do currently, where they have, they make an announcement that we're gonna have proponent hearing on this date, we're going to have opposition on this date, and then it's closed. There's not this back and forth and reviewing tirelessly to get it right. And it did take a long time for the dyslexia to come out, but it was a working formula that educators could do. It wasn't legislators telling us how to do your jobs, okay? So, I just want to go back to this. So, it's gonna be called the DEW now. There'll still be the Department of Education, but they'll only be in charge of licensing and a few other things. All the legislation will be divided into K through 12, and then Career Technical Education Centers. One of the big complaints was that the OD, the Department of Education, they felt, the career-based people didn't feel that they were getting enough support. So, they decided to talk to their legislators and get this changed, so that they could have more instrumental things. We feel, or I feel, that we could address this with the Department of Education and ask them to do another department, sub-department, and fix the problem, rather than creating a bureaucracy that will be more money, more expense to the taxpayers, with less effectiveness in the rules. And then this kind of goes on with that. I'm not gonna go, as you can see, it goes on and on forever. One of the other things is it codifies the rules of homeschooling and non-chartered, non-public schools. Basically, it's saying the rule, we're not gonna affect those people. They get to have whatever they have currently, and we will not be able to change some of the inequalities in the rulings right now. For example, we are held to a certain standard. A lot of these schools are not. And I'm gonna move on to Senate Bill 11, which is one of the three voucher bills. Now, there's three vouchers currently in the Senate. This is one of them. It's, as you can see, it is going to increase, it makes all K through 12 students eligible. This is the backpack bill, that you might have heard it called. And it's gonna increase from homeschools getting $250 to getting $2,000. This is over $1.2 billion that is going to go out to non-public education. When you only have X amount of money, and you give 1.2 of it away, that means it's gotta be taken away from someone. And I'll let you figure out who. Okay, House Bill One. This is not to be confused with Senate Bill One, and this is very important. House Bill One has to do with taxes. And unfortunately, I am on the wrong slide deck in the hurry to get this up. And so, I am going to turn this over to Mark Phillips, because he can say it better than I can. I apologize, Mark, that we got the wrong slide deck up here. I had it all printed out.
So, Sally said this deals with taxes. And what Ohio is looking to do is, or what's being proposed here in House Bill One, is they wanna flatten the income tax rate to a flat 2.75%. At the same time, they're gonna look at property taxes, and they're gonna adjust the percentage that's used to assess or value your home. This gets complicated real quick, Sally. If you just wanna roll forward, roll forward again.
Yeah, I know the wrong deck. Sorry. And he's got the slide deck over there.
So, what happens is, I mean, as you're looking at property taxes, there's a lot of things come into play. It's your home's value, your district's tax rate, whether or not your district's at the 20 mil floor, House Bill 920, whether or not your full-voted village has the capacity to absorb the increase off the 20 mil floor. If you take all of those things and just sort of funnel them down into three simple concepts, it's what I did for the board. I mean, Tuskegee Valley will lose money. Local property owners will pay more money, so that the state can save money, because they're gonna take away the 10% reduction credit that they pay back on behalf of the taxpayer to the school districts and other local governments. They're gonna eliminate that. So, that's where they're gonna save money. They're gonna push part of that burden back on to local taxpayers and cut the funding to school districts and local governments in the process.
So, this is really important to understand, is that it's gonna sound really great. They're lowering your taxes, but really, they're not. They're just sending it down to the local level for you to make up that tax. And then we are gonna have to go to you for a levy and say, hey, we need more money, because they've cut it back. And then you might say, no. And then we go down a slippery slope of having to cut things. And you know that cycle, when you run out of money, what you have to do. So, it's very important that each and every person in our community takes care and calls your senators and say no to House Bill 9, because the Republicans who are in power have the majority vote, and they could pass this if they don't hear from us. I'm gonna go past, I'm sorry, I apologize that I got the wrong slide deck. There's, as you can tell, there's 100 of these. House... Yeah, okay. So, in this one, this is talking about the budget of the governor. Now, the governor puts out a budget, and he suggests what he would like to see in the budget. It doesn't mean it's gonna happen. It goes to the Senate and the House, and then they kind of change everything around. One of the things he wants to do with the voucher system is increase the people who can receive voucher system from 250% to 400%. That means anyone with $111,000 or more in a four-family income will be eligible for vouchers. Another increase of money. And that's it. So, I apologize that I didn't get the right one, but that covers most of them. So, the two bills you need to watch is Senate Bill One, which is already passed the Senate, and it's in the House. And the House Bill are looking at Senate Bill One and House Bill 12 as a united one. And they have already had their proponent testimony, those who agree with them. And the proponent is next week, and then they're gonna vote. So, this is a very quick turnaround, because they're trying to get this passed. So, please, please, if you care about your school district, please tell them not to cut our funding, because we can't afford it.
All right. Thanks, Mrs. Green. Any of the board members have questions? And just so our community is aware, next Tuesday, the Ohio Schools Board Association is holding their state legislative conference. And most of, I think, if not all of our board will be there to meet with the governor and our representatives and to share our thoughts and feelings on some of this pending legislation. So, thank you all for traveling to Columbus for that. Next up, one of the most exciting parts of the board agenda, in my opinion, is the Students of the Month. So, Mr. Phillips?
Okay, thank you. I'll have Jace come up first. Jace Digman. And I can't joke with him about giving a speech, because he's in Speech and Debate and enjoys it.
I will stand here for 10 minutes and make you cry.
I'll just have to go right next to him, so I can get a picture of me together.
Just like that. Jace is a senior. He's the son of Dan and Angie Digman. He's a member of Speech and Debate, participates in plays and musicals. He's also in the choir and is a member of our Hope Squad. And his hobbies include watching movies, listening to music, and singing. And I just found out that he has starred in a, what kind of role? In your new movie, you're gonna be in June 2nd.
Star's one word for it. I'm an extra.
I need to know exactly how this is. He starred as an extra.
There you go.
In what name is the movie? It's called Shooting Stars. Shooting Stars, coming out June 2nd. So, here's our newest actor, star as an extra. It's still better than I've done. After graduation, he does plan to pursue a career in acting. Okay, next, Emma. Emma is our Athlete of the Month. Emma Benner is a senior. She's the daughter of Sarah Benner and Nick Benner. She's a member of the cross, she's a member of many things this year, athletically, cross-country. She also participated in our club soccer, girls soccer team, and was a member of the cheerleading squad. That was just in the fall. And she competed in indoor track and competition cheer, which she led them to state championship. And then, because she's not tired enough yet, she's going to be a member of our spring track team. Her hobbies, when she has time somewhere in this, she likes hanging out with friends and getting Starbucks and watching TV. After graduation, she plans to attend either Akron or Mount Union to major in business and hopefully continue her career in running. Congratulations. All right, last but not least, our Student of the Month is Tegan. I tried to delay as long as I could.
I wanted to go first.
I know, but your mom might walk in the door any second. That's how it works. She is a senior, the daughter of Karen and myself, and she was nominated for kindness. So, obviously, she gets that from one of us. She's a member of the Ski and Board Club, Pep Club, and our Hope Squad. Her hobbies include making pottery, reading, working, and hanging out with her friends and neighbors. And after graduation, she plans to attend Miami University and study marketing and graphic design.
Come on up, Mom.
Congratulations.
Have you done?
So, congratulations and thank you. Absolutely. All three. Mrs. Lindbach would like one picture. So, Emma, Jace, Tegan. Tegan, Jace, Emma, with your plaques.
Yeah, this is second. I need to get all three of ya. Get in there, two Misses Phillips. You think, you sit behind them, please. Ready? There we go. One, two, three. May another one, one, two, three. Smile again. Congratulations.
That's for those in the bargain hunter.
Yeah, that's where this'll go, in the bargain.
Jace, Emma, Tegan, congratulations on behalf of the board again. Well done. We see you a lot. You're involved with many, many activities, so we appreciate that. Thank you for representing our district well. To the parents, thank you for your support. We appreciate having them. So, thank you, Mr. Gooding. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Great report. Okay, now we will move into the new business consent agenda. Item A, one through, let's get down to the bottom here. 12, Do I Have a Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Sally, move. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Katie, second. Do we have any discussion? I have a couple comments, but maybe I don't wanna usurp that. First of all, under the donations, number two, we are so thankful for these who have stepped up to give donations, Dan Hirschberger, and the other ones are organizations. And it is so nice to see 100,000 coming in for the 7 through 12 auditorium. So, I just want to give kudos from that. Also, on item number six, I think I want to congratulate Mr. Burton for accepting the newly created position, and it does mean more responsibility. And he, I believe, is currently under training right now, is he not, or is he soon to be?
He'll begin training now, yep. And he'll earn a building operator's certificate and also a CDL, so.
Okay. So, I just thought that was exceptional, since that was the new creation, new position that we created. And then my final comment is, you know, it is so nice. We always recognize our high school students right here during the meeting. But I don't want us to ever overlook, there is the fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade Students of the Month. And I just wanted to congratulate all of the students that continue to excel here at Tuskegee Valley. So, those were my comments.
Very cool.
Any others?
Yeah, the only other thing I was gonna point out, item eight and item nine, due to the district transition plan that was approved at the February board meeting, that really put things into motion for next year. So, item eight eliminates all of our existing positions as far as administrative assistants, cooks, and custodians, in order that we can staff what the buildings will look like next year. So, as you eliminate those positions, number nine, you're recreating those. So, everybody keeps their job. The only difference is we're going down one custodian. And we're thrilled that Mr. Burton was able to take buildings and grounds. And so, we have all of our existing staff needed in those categories. So, thank you all for your support in creating that position. And then these will be approved tonight, these positions, and then from there... these are, these will be approved tonight, these positions, and then from there, uh, we will work with staff and get everybody plugged in for next school year.
Okay, any other discussion on the board? Hearing none, Mr. Phillips, will you call a roll?
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mr. Gooding?
Yes. Okay, uh, item number, Roman numeral six, is approve a resolution opposing Senate Bill One. We just heard Sally's explanation, do you, uh, do you think I should read down through this?
No, I don't think you need to.
Okay. I think it's, uh, it's already there in front of us, do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Ben, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Mrs. Berger, second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Gooding?
Yes. Roman numeral seven is to approve the Second Amendment to the project agreement with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission pursuant to, uh, Higher Revise Code 3318083. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
Okay, Sally, you moved, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Katie, second. Do we have any discussion? Would you like to say something, Sally, on that, or?
I'll say something, then I'll allow Mark to fill in the gaps. Um, as one of the representatives of the board for the Ohio Facility, um, Commission, um, last month, we approved, um, the payment of, uh, we had a...
Guaranteed maximum price.
Guar, guaranteed maximum price for the pre-K through six. At what, at that time, we had an NOI means, uh, means of intent, basically, saying that, yes, we will pay the money. Now it's saying, you have to pay the money. And so that's what we're doing right now, saying, yes, we have the funds and we will pay the money. We, before we get any additional money that we have been promised from the state, we must do this first and then take it to the, um, Ohio Facilities Commission, and then they will, because we say we have the money, then they guarantee us that they will give us the money that they promised us.
Good.
Any others? Thoughts?
Well said.
So any, any further discussion on the board? Let's proceed to vote, Mr. Phillips?
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mr. Gooding?
Yes. Okay, now we move to Roman numeral eight, the Leadership Team Reports, and we did receive all of those, but, uh, uh, tonight, I'd like to, and is Mr. Murphy, oh, there's Mr. Murphy, okay.
No, Mr. Gooding, I don't have anything else, uh, in addition to what you have, you've received already from the Leadership Team Report, so, unless there are questions.
Okay, hearing none, thank you. Mr. Phillips? No others? Okay. Mrs. Knowles? Mrs. Clements?
Anything else?
Boy, this is the fastest head out there. Yeah. Mr. Street?
Nothing else.
Okay. Mr. Powell?
I have nothing else to say.
Well, we made it all the way through except now. Now we have Mrs. Sally Green, so I think we're gonna hear from her. Sally, you have the floor.
Actually, um, I, I sent you the email, I don't know if you had time to read it or not, but please read it because it highlights what you need to do this month and what we need to do as a team. Um, the only, I mean, I went to something every night in the last month, um, about education. The one that I would like to highlight is cyber law. I didn't get a chance to talk to, um, Chris, so I don't know, did Chris, did you go to cyber law? Okay, I didn't think it was gonna fit in your schedule, so I went, which is the least technical person besides Dick on this board. So a lot of it went over my head, I took as much notice as I could, but the fact is laws are changing slower than technology is. So we've got a big problem coming upon us, and I would like, and I will encourage us as we start the new year, that we make sure that we're up to date on our policies with our technology, and we keep that current and, um, try to evolve as fast as we can with the technology. So that's it for me, thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you, Mrs. Green. And, uh, now as far as announcements, uh, the next regular Board of Education meeting will be held April the 10th, 2023, at 6:00 PM, right here in the Trojan Center.
Mr. Gooding, can I make another announcement?
You certainly can, thank you.
I just wanted to, for public, to publicly recognize Mrs. Limbacher, uh, she left in December under the time you were... Uh, but last month she gained, and, and she's working now with the Bargain Hunter, so, Barb, it's good for you to be back in the district and to be here with us, so. Yeah, so I wanted to publicly thank you for that.
Thank you, Barb.
May I say something?
You certainly may.
Um, I know at last meeting, we talked a little bit about the alumni basketball game, and I just wanna remind all of our community, if you're alumni graduate, please go on, we've created a new database for alumni, um, alumni that, just some background information where, like, classes can come in and get email, mass email addresses to do, like, class reunions. Um, we've created that, I think it's on the website where you can go under, it's under the Trojan scholarship, I mean, like, it's kind of put together with the scholarship. Um, so I encourage all of the graduates of Tuskegee Valley to check that out and get signed up on it.
Okay, Mr. President.
Okay.
Sorry.
Mrs. Green?
I did forget, and I apologize, but I feel like a shout-out needs to be given to Mark Murphy, um, Derek Varanski, and, uh, Mark Phillips. 1.8 million dollars was taken away from our project of the abatement and given to another area in our project because OFCC didn't want to add that much more money into the project. So we have gone to them multiple times to get that money back, they have told us no, maybe, let's wait and see. Um, but these three wrote a very compelling letter to the governor, we're praying that the governor, um, finds it and that his officers, uh, read it, and that we have another avenue, maybe, to get that money back, because we really need it. So thank you, each and every one of you, because, um, it was an amazing letter. So thank you.
Thank you. On this side, any announcements? Okay, that'll be fine. All right, uh, now we will move to, uh, item 10, Executive Session for the purpose of the investigation of charges slash complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual. Do I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
I'll make the mo, oh, go ahead. I'll make the motion.
Okay, so Katie moved, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Amy, second. Mr. Phillips, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mr. Gooding?
Yes. We will now move into Executive Session.